All right, I'd like to call to order the January-
Recording in progress.
Select Board meeting at six thirty P.M.
So first up is public input.
Need attendance.
Oh, attendance is Peter Clay, Ben Timman.
Deirdre Parrotti.
Gary Cheeseman.
Okay. We have ten minutes reserved for public input. All participants wishing to address the Select Board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hand. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. The Select Board may or may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comments, but are not on the agenda. Got anybody?
No.
See nobody.
Okay, so let's move on to the Town Administrator's update and town announcements, please.
All right. First up, we have a couple, well, we have an anticipated opening in the HDC. So we're just gonna start pushing that out, so if anybody knows, anybody that may be interested in getting involved there, there's a likelihood of an opening. And the CPC also has an opening. John Cosolito recently stepped down, so it's a big loss there, but it is leaving an open seat. So if you know what, we're gonna again be pushing out through social media, website, and signboard for likely both positions and trying to get the word out, so if you can help us get the word out, be helpful, thank you. Third quarter tax bill went out. Everybody should have received it by now. So I know the Assessors Office and the Treasurer Collector's Office, I was talking to them towards the end of the day to see how it went. Usually the first day of the third, the receipt of the third quarter tax bill can be, you know, the phone lines can be busy, and actually it was a relatively quiet day. So, you know, it doesn't really mean anything, but it's a good, certainly a good sign, particularly with the kind of the little bit of a shakeup last year. Just a reminder that the CPR and the AED training is next week, Tuesday, January ninth, three thirty to seven at the Firehouse. We already have twenty-five people confirmed for attendance. We have room for thirty, so we're extending the deadline to this Thursday. And at that point, we have one or two requests for attendance from a board member or members who have a son or daughter that works for the Hamilton Wenham School District. So if we don't have staff or direct boards or committee members signed up by this Thursday and the day, we're gonna open up those five spots to other people, take advantage of it. And just, you know, so next week, now the next meeting is gonna be a busy one, so, you know, just so we're, I think we're gonna see if we can have, start maybe five-thirty. There's gonna be a relatively lengthy executive session. We'll have, we're finally able to complete the integrations of the MOU language into the library and police contracts, so those will be ready for your review. We also will have draft proposals for both the deputy chief and the fire chief for their individual contract reviews for discussion. And the library and police will hopefully be on the open meeting for adoption. These are just the incorporation of the terms that were agreed to by the Select Board. Yeah, and during, with an MOU, and now they've been integrated into the contract and agreed by both parties. And then after that, we're gonna have our Capitol hearing, I'm anticipating probably about forty-five minutes, and that will be a presentation from the requesting departments and a basis for the need, and also a staff recommendation for the twenty-five Capitol Plan. No vote will be needed that night. That will come the, the next meeting, so give you a couple weeks to think questions and make any decisions.
Just a reminder to all applicants that have sent in an application for CPC eligibility, the full applications are due next Tuesday, the ninth, end of business day. Again, that's for the CPC full applications. These are for the applicants that have already applied for eligibility back in November. And CPC will be having their first of three meetings next Thursday, the eleventh, and they'll be at six-thirty, and there'll be three or four presenters, they're dividing it up into the three meetings. They'll be presenting their applications either in person or via Zoom, so I just wanted to make that known as well.
Is that it?
Yep, that is it.
All right, just for those of you who are interested in the Hamilton Wenham Elementary School project, or you should be, it's a big project. We're having two community information forums, Wednesday, January tenth, six-thirty to eight P.M. at the Middle School multipurpose room, and then Wednesday, January seventeenth, nine to ten-thirty in the morning at the Regional High School Auditorium. And if you just go to the high school site, all that information's right there. There's a lot of information about this project. Anyone else?
So a reminder that we're currently recruiting for our new committee, the Climate Action and Sustainability Committee, so if you have interest or expertise, please do consider submitting an application and volunteering for what was sure to be a great committee.
I'll just comment that I saw that the bollards have been installed, is that the right technology?
Yep, that is correct, yep.
And those were funded through federal-
Yep, the ARBA fund, yeah, Federal American Rescue Plan Act.
Right, right.
What are these things?
They're bollards, they're, you know, vertical barriers that sort of cover the front area of the town hall as a security measure.
All right.
No one can crash into the-
All right, shall we move on?
Is everyone giving their update?
Yeah, good here.
Yeah, let's move on.
All right, let's talk about the opening the warrant for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to be located at the Bueker School on Saturday, April sixth, 2024, at one P.M.
Yep.
Any discussion?
I guess just to highlight, this is something that, you know, the board does every year, you have to open the warrant, and so what this does, it's, you know, the board now can entertain requests for articles to be placed on the warrant. The Select Board will have their sponsored warrant articles, and, you know, any requests from boards or committees that come to the Select Board, you can choose to put it on or not. It's the Select Board's document, and the, and also this is the period of time when the, any citizens petitions that want to get placed on the warrant would need to be submitted during the open period, and they'll need ten signatures from registered voters. And again, anybody who's listening from home or hears this, that, you know, the town urges you to, you know, submit it earlier rather than later, and that, you know, we're willing to submit the, to KP Law for review to make sure that the article written is actually doing what it wants to do, and there's been some situations in the past where unreviewed citizens petitions have made it onto the warrant, and at the end of, you know, at the end of the day, the warrant as drafted didn't do what the drafter intended it to do. So we just want to make sure that, you know, people are getting what they want to have done, done, and written appropriately.
Discussion?
So how long would we typically keep the warrant open?
About a month. And the Select Board has the ability to reopen it when changes.
Just to make sure there's enough time. Margaret has a question, Peter.
Can I come over and shake off?
Sure.
I saw that you were gonna be opening the warrant tonight, I just wondered how long you think you'll keep it open for, because the planning board is planning on submitting a zoning article, and my timeframe for getting all of that done is, you know, a few weeks, probably like early February, I should have it all ready to go. I just wanted to make sure I'm not gonna miss that deadline for the-
Yeah, I mean, well, tentatively it was set for the first meeting in February.
What's that date?
I think it's the seventh or the sixth.
Sixth.
Sixth, but, you know, I guess we could, we could push it back if needed, about one meeting.
Yeah, I think it might just be one, one meeting that I-
Well, you can always open and close on the same night.
Yeah, you can reopen, right.
Okay.
You can reopen, close it, add it.
Very good, thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, I move to open the warrant for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to be located at the Bueker School on Saturday, April sixth, 2024, at one P.M.
Second.
Discussion? All right, we'll do a vote.
Ben? Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Peter, yes. All right, let's have a discussion and potential vote on application for liquor license from Platte d'Jour at the Wenham Tea House.
Yep, so Platte d'Jour has requested a liquor license at the Wenham Tea House, as you said. The application is complete and satisfies the requirements, and is up for the Select Board to approve it as presented, at which point we'll submit it to the ABCC for final approval.
Question about, because I know that the type of liquor license at the Tea House has changed over time. I was involved as a private citizen in one of those changes, so is it a pouring license, like on-premises alcohol service now, or is it for people to buy beer and wine to take away, do we know?
This is on-premises.
On-premises pouring license, right.
Yeah, they're pouring.
So there's one available because the prior proprietor, oh, hello, had that same type of pouring license.
There's actually many licenses available in Wenham.
Yeah, it does look like it's a transfer on the application, so I believe it's the same license that was existing, existed in that establishment, will be transferring to Platte d'Jour.
Discussion?
Good here.
Yeah, looks good.
I move to approve the all alcoholic beverage license application for Platte d'Jour as presented and to submit to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Do you have one on your phone?
Deirdre, yes.
No. Gary, yes.
Peter, yes. All right. Discussion and vote on Arbor Day proclamation as presented by Kate Mallory, sorry, on December nineteenth, 2023. Do we have to read this thing in?
Probably don't have to read it. Because she has presented, it's, uh, that's Kate, you wanna read it?
Want me to?
Sure.
Recording in progress.
This is the Tree City USA Official Proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting healing and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values and beautify our community, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, the Wenham Select Board, hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, 2023 as Arbor Day, and we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of the future generations, dated the second day of January, 2024.
All right.
Just that the date should be April twenty-eighth, 2024.
So this is actually for our application for 2023. So they always, you have to celebrate Arbor Day, and then you proclaim that you celebrated it, and it's part of the application process. So that's why we're doing it now. I know it seems counterintuitive. You'll be doing another one next year after as well.
And do we have a date for this year's?
I think it's the last Friday in April, and we'll be rolling out the whole historic, the tree program, and our Big Bang will be Arbor Day, planting some more trees at the Apple Orchard. And last year, we had about sixty, sixty-five people, so we hope to-
Last Friday?
Last Friday in April.
Twenty-sixth.
Exactly, thank you. So we hope to get at least a hundred people this year, and because of the town pushing this initiative, we have some money for some great food, so we'll have food, and it will be a great time. Get your shovels ready.
But the trees are from private donations, right?
Yes.
So anybody, we can pitch that a little bit.
Yes, and we'll be doing that during the Heritage Tree Program rollout, getting more donors. Each tree costs about four hundred dollars, around there. Great.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Discussion? All right. I move to approve the Arbor Day proclamation as presented effective January second, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote.
Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Peter, yes. All right. Used car dealer license renewals, continued discussion and potential vote, Freeman's Garage, thirty-four, thirty-six Arbor Street. So you've been poking into this.
Yeah, so as we left at last meeting, the Select Board requested me to follow up with council to see what, you know, what authority, what ability, if any, the Select Board had to place additional restrictions on the license, and I did that, I spoke with Attorney Riley, who actually had some involvement in this particular situation back in, I believe it was two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and he said, yes, we can, the board can place reasonable restrictions on the application, and, yeah, I mean, on the, on the license, and, you know, reasonable is getting not clearly defined, but, you know, you can't impact the owner's ability to do business, where it's as part of his livelihood. And so it looks like back in nineteen, I mean, two thousand seventeen, they, they did place some restrictions where they reduced the amount of cars that could be on the property to twenty-five, and only five of those can be in, in front of the house. And, you know, the other two elements that I kind of, we kind of talked through a little bit was, you know, that there is, you know, existing non-conforming, like existing non-conforming use and structures on the property, so, you know, whether it was used as a repair facility or a storage facility, or, you know, something like that, there is, you know, definitely a history there of commercial use. So it's a residential district, but the commercial use predated the residential zoning. Additionally, in Wenham, by right in your bylaws, every lot is allowed to have, nobody can have, a junkyard is not allowed, but everyone is allowed to have up to six hundred square feet of junk on their lot. So below six hundred square feet is, you know, considered acceptable. The Freeman's Garage operates on two lots, although it seems like he's been restricted to the six hundred square feet, not the twelve hundred square feet, due to, you know, the contiguous use across the two lots. So it's in the building inspector's opinion that the various pieces of junk that, or car parts or, you know, plows that are in his yard fit within the six hundred square feet of allowable use. So I think in this case specifically, you would be looking at only restrictions on the license itself.
What does that mean?
So, at least in my understanding at this point, is that it would be something like reducing, further reduction of the amount of vehicles, although I don't believe, it looks like Mr. Current's here, but I don't believe that he's anywhere near the twenty-five vehicles that he's restricted to, at least from what I could tell by driving by.
No, I don't believe he's close to the twenty-five.
Dennis, Dennis, name and address, please.
Dennis Current, thirty-two Arbor Street, we also own thirty-eight Arbor. I don't believe he's at that count. Our concern is the clutter of the junk, and it's continuously happening, and unless I come up here every year and mention something about it, then we go backwards. There's one other issue there, and I remember KP Law got involved, he has a Class D license, which is ten thousand G V W or less. Right now, there's a construction vehicle, it's a bucket truck, and that's well over that. We, the reason why we had it defined is because at one time, there was a school bus, a full-size school bus, for well over two years there, and definitely not appropriate for a, you know, let's call it a backyard sale. You know, we got, we're trying to curtail the junk, and most of you, maybe Mr. Cheeseman and Peter were here, when he was at on the place, the place was immaculate. Now, it's far from there, you know, so unless I complain every year, it just progressively gets worse, you know, and I'm sorry if you feel I'm wasting your time or wasting my time, but that's the way I feel, okay? And I want a definition, if you, if you could, does that license go with the property or with, with Mr. Freeman? Because eventually, we all, we all move along, and I just want to make sure that if, I'm not gonna be looking at that mess for thirty years if he passes away or decides to stop.
I don't have an answer to that, but I can get it for you.
Great, I'd appreciate it.
I venture at least a opinion on that question, which is that it, given that it's a license, it does not carry forward with the property, it's personal to, to Mr. Freeman, and there's that, and the statute actually has criteria in there that speak to the suitability of the individual license holder. So it's not something that would run with the land, like, you know, like a easement or, you know, restrictive covenant or something.
So it would be non-transferable, is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay.
It's my understanding, yeah.
You know, if you go over to Burnett's, or even take a ride by Fallon's, you don't hear any complaints from the neighbors because it's clean. They've got many cars, but it's clean, and, you know, it's, I mean, I look on top of both sides, so it's just trying to curtail it, try to keep it intact, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Steve, I think at the last meeting, we talked about how many times we could send somebody over to look at the property.
Yeah, it sounds like-
Because I think what you were saying is, they picked it up when they know they're gonna get inspected, and then it declined steadily thereafter.
Yeah, you should see the middle of July, but it's, it's, it's like a typical fifteen-year-old kid, you know, cleaning your room up or you're not going out this weekend, so Thursday night, he's out there cleaning.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, that prevents additional inspections, and particularly if there's a complaint for violation, then the, you know, Select Board can order inspection and, you know, call a hearing if it's found that Mr. Freeman is in violation of the restrictions of his license, but, you know, I think from what I've gathered is that, you know, the license and the junk are kind of two separate issues.
Yeah, well, at one time he had-
It's like we're, we're trying to tie it to the license.
Right.
You know, and it's like, what, what can the board do specifically within, you know, the constraints of the license to sell used cars that are going to impact the, the junk problem? I think that's where we're struggling to, you know, to find, you know, where the overlap is, because it's really two separate-
No, I agree.
Two separate things, that, you know, I think that, you know, we certainly can go out and inspect it as many times, but if it's found to be in compliance with the license specifically, you know, I'm not sure what the authority the board has to do anything further, particularly with, you know, if we have the building inspector measuring the pieces of junk and adding them up to the six hundred square feet, and the zoning bylaws allow six hundred square feet to every lot in town, you know, it-
Now, can we ask that, that six hundred feet be reduced?
Well, that would be-
Down to three hundred total.
Well, that you can't reduce, right, so that would be a bylaw change that would have to go before town meeting.
He's asking for a special permit for the license, correct? You can put that restriction on that.
Not my, not to my understanding is not, you know, if you're allowed by right, you can't additionally restrict what everybody has the right to as part of the license, I don't believe.
No, I, I agree with that, I mean, I think that, that, well, the definition, as, as the Town Administrator alluded to, the definition and the zoning bylaws for junkyard is six hundred square feet or more of junk, and junkyards aren't permitted anywhere in Wenham. My understanding is that over time, that language has been interpreted by maybe successive building inspectors and zoning enforcement officers to mean that, that anyone in town has a right to have as much as six hundred square feet of junk on their property. I'm not certain that that's like a correct interpretation of the, of the bylaw, but I also know that we can't really single one property owner out and say, well, we're gonna apply it differently to you. It may be something that, that should be looked at either through a bylaw change or maybe through a change in how that particular part of the bylaw is implemented, but it would need to be done in a uniform way.
Well, here's where I struggle with that. He's asking the board for, for a used, you know, continuance of his used car license, okay? Is he a resident or is he a used car? He, he, see, this is where it's, it's cloudy, right? So you can put the restrictions on it, you, you went down from, you went from twelve hundred, because he has two pieces of property, to the six hundred. I'd like to see it to go down to three hundred.
Yeah, well, the twelve hundred to six hundred, I think, was a theory that he, since he owned two parcels, he shouldn't be entitled to, to six hundred times two. I mean, you could run into a situation, at least theoretically, where if the board were to revoke or severely restrict his used car license, he, he might say, okay, well, you know, maybe there'd be a legal challenge on the six hundred versus twelve hundred, and maybe you end up with more junk there, you know, based on his status as a citizen. So I, I feel for you, there's, you know, there, there are these kind of competing interests, but for me, I, you know, I've taken a pretty close look at it, and I just don't see evidence that he's, that he's violated any of his, any current conditions of his, of his license. And that is separate from some of these other issues that we're talking about, that's my view, anyway.
What is the ramification of doing an inspection and the building inspector saying you're not in compliance? Does that result in what action from the inspector?
Yeah, well, from my understanding is that, so the, the inspection would be, well, I guess there'd be two things, there'd be inspection would be more than six hundred square feet of junk, right, and then, again, pushing down, I think there's conflicting opinions whether it was actually allowable to go from twelve hundred to six hundred feet, but for the, you know, assuming that it was, and with the, the, you know, that, that complaint would go directly to Rich's office, and Rich would go out and inspect it and make the determination, and it wouldn't get to the board's level. With the license, and the Select Board granted the license, the complaint would come to the Select Board, Rich would go out and inspect it to make, to see whether it's in compliance with the license specifically, and if it's not in compliance, then you could call a hearing with, with Mr. Freeman and, you know, ultimately suspend the license if he doesn't bring it back into compliance. But again, that's where the two, you know, the two issues lie, and where it gets kind of gray area, like you said.
So the, the junk area is basically inspection under the bylaws, whereas the number of cars is the only thing that- Whereas the number of cars is the only thing that's really delegated or written out as far as the license.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So perhaps uh, more frequent uh, inspections of, and I should think we'd have to apply it to all uh, licensees in town, not just one?
For, yeah, I mean, I think ideally the inspection would be triggered by a um, a complaint, a violation complaint. Likely by Anna Butter, but it could be any, as, you know, Rich, uh, does, has to be a resident complaint, has to be in writing. And then he'll go out and inspect it. And same for it, same for the zoning complaint.
So Dennis, you up for uh, writing some letters?
I've been doing it for twenty years.
Yeah, so the, so if there's a failed inspection on the bylaw, then that reverts to uh, the select board's ability to find?
Yes, from my understanding.
Uh, one other question. Is there restriction of hours on that, on that license?
Um, you know, now that you mention it, there isn't on the memo. But I do believe I was reading one of the emails, one of the old emails that did restrict the hours of operation. But I, I don't have that in front of me and I can do, I can, I can look into that further for you.
Well, you know, during the winter, nobody's out, right? Come springtime, everybody's out. And, you know, everybody's stopping, parking on the sidewalk. And, I mean, I can't control his customers, you know?
Right.
So.
Yeah, let me look into that. And I think I can send you an email with, with what I find.
Terrific.
Okay.
I mean, we appreciate anything you guys can do to just try to keep it in control, you know?
Definitely, I mean, e- everybody, whether it's this property or other similar properties, I mean, a butter's, if, if they, you or others see junk that seems to be spreading beyond six hundred square feet, which is a, you know, pretty sizable area, um, that, you know, that's grounds for a complaint.
Right.
Have we looked too at the aspect that is mentioned of quote, customer parking? Don't other uh, at-home businesses under the zoning require um, parking space?
I can look in.
And limitations on the number of vehicles or?
Yeah, I mean, I can look into it, but I think this would be a situation where it's a grandfathered use before there were any parking limitations.
Right.
But I can, I can certainly look into.
I believe there was some parking limitations tried to. I, I wanna say it was when Catherine Harrison was on the select board. And he was supposed to have all his clients parking his own driveway. But trying to control that is tough.
Right.
I mean, ideally, to control it is you take the cars off the front of the lawn. What's the chance of that happening?
I mean, I can't speak, speak to the chance.
I mean, it's, you always got two or three cars on the lawn.
I mean, I do think that the board has to be careful with, you know, how restrictive it gets. If it gets to the point where it's restricting his ability to do business in a used car facility, I think probably relies heavily on drive-by traffic for advertising, that it could be, you know, open up to potential him filing a lawsuit and having the courts reverse uh, that restriction.
Okay. All right.
So are we gonna look into this parking issue? 'Cause obviously at Fallon and at uh.
I can, I can look into the, I can look into the parking and see if there's, if that's a restriction that can be placed or not. I don't have the answer tonight, but.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I hate to kind of beat this old drum here, but it seems like it, it gets away a little bit because of the, the, the select boards have changed people, you know? And, and people, and, oh yeah, I remember hearing about this. And then it, it, it flares its ugly head.
Right.
And then we have to step in and try to control it again, you know? I, I do appreciate your time for it, you know?
Of cour- of course, absolutely. That's what we're here for. Um, the, you know, my hesitation with parking is the, the enforcement side of it. So it's like, you know, you call, whether it's the police or zoning goes down there and the person's gone. And it's like, all right, well, don't let it happen again. And somebody comes and parks out front. And, you know, Freeman's like, I told him not to park there. You know what I mean? It, it just becomes, it becomes difficult. But I'll certainly look into it and see if that, that's, that's feasible for, as a restriction.
So you have a couple things to follow up on?
Yep.
So why don't we um, come back and discuss at the next uh, board meeting?
That's fine. I mean, it's amongst you now.
In the meanwhile, the licenses, there is no license currently, right? As of yesterday?
I believe that's correct, but I do not know the, you know, implications to that. If he has to cease operation or if, you know, the town's failure, failure to act. So we can continue to operate until we either deny it or approve it. I can also look into that.
Can we move, can we approve it for the month of January?
No, you can't approve partial years.
I think it's a matter of um, enforcement discretion, so presumably the building inspector's not gonna be shutting him down during this interim period when we're considering what to do.
I don't think so.
I know he has gone as far as, I believe it was like March fifteenth, without a license.
He has gone as far as.
When it's, it's come to this again, you know, in the past, so.
Yeah, and to, I mean, to your point that, looking in the records, it didn't seem like there was a lot of years that I could find that it was done by January first. It always lingered into January or February at least.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, we don't have any minutes to discuss.
Nope.
Well, maybe setting a record here, Peter. Under your chairmanship. Thank you.
So we're, so we're firm on five thirty for the uh, next meeting?
I would say it's highly likely. I mean, i- i- unless one of those few things fall off, which I don't expect, uh, I would assume, I would, if they, if that's okay with everybody, we can obviously do something different if it's not.
Otherwise, I move that we adjourn the select board meeting of uh, two January at seven oh seven P M.
Second. All call vote?
Ben, yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Gary, yes.
Peter, yes. All right, folks, thank you.